Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible tragedy. This video will conclude the testimony given at the U.S. Coast Guard's public hearing by Amber Bay, former Ocean Gate's Director of Administration. And in this second half of Miss Bay's testimony, questions continued to revolve around Ocean Gate's finances, the shrinking workforce at the company, as well as safety concerns. These include asking about her interaction with Antonella Willby when Miss Willby approached Miss Bay regarding the loud bang incident that was heard from the Titan sub on Dive 80, and how she felt her mission specialist's concerns were not fully addressed, something we heard about from her own testimony. And I was really glad that the Coast Guard brought this moment up and, towards the end of the video, began to ask at least what I consider to be more hard-hitting, direct questions. And it was really interesting to see Miss Bay's reactions and hear her responses to these. As with all of these testimony videos, I will be back again at the end for some final thoughts. And so for now, I thank you all very much for clicking on this video. It is really appreciated. So now, let's just begin and hear the final part of Amber Bay's testimony.
The proceedings are back in order. Ms. Bay, at this time Lieutenant Commander Emmons has some questions for you.
Good morning, Ms. Bay.
Good morning.
As Human Resources, are you familiar with payroll taxes?
Yes.
Were the Ocean Gate Board of Directors paid?
No.
Were the Board of Directors offered shares of the company?
I am uncertain.
I'm sorry?
I'm uncertain whether or not they were.
Did you ever have any conversations with the Board of Directors?
Not directly.
Can you expand on that indirectly?
Indirectly, most of the Board of Directors' meetings, especially during the COVID time, were Teams calls or Zoom calls. If they were to come on site, Rear Admiral John Lockwood would come on site. He does a lot of things around the Port of Everett. There was always a handshake and "nice to see you," those types of conversations. "How are the kids?" And then they would go into their closed-door Board of Directors meeting.
Were you ever part of those closed-door Director meetings?
I was not.
What did you understand to be Admiral Lockwood's role on the Board of Directors?
I actually did not understand what his role was. Obviously, on a consultancy basis, understanding maritime leaned on. And he was a huge advocate of deep-sea exploration and the maritime, you know, being progressive, I guess.
You had stated earlier that mission specialists, in your eyes, were not passengers. They were part of the crew. Were mission specialist employees of Ocean Gate?
No.
Were mission specialists ever given shares of the company?
Not to my understanding, no.
Were mission specialists required to complete a physical?
I believe they were quite a few times. I'm not certain if there were exceptions to that rule, but yes.
Were they required to get that physical after payment or before payment?
I am uncertain.
And do you know who verified if they received that physical and completed it?
I believe that was, again, Expedition Director and Stockton.
If mission specialists got hurt, did they qualify for workman's compensation benefits?
No, they would not.
Did mission specialists get health benefits from Ocean Gate?
No, they did not.
Did you collect payroll taxes from mission specialists?
No, I did not.
And did you collect payroll taxes from Ocean Gate employees?
Yes, as necessary and needed, dictated by Washington State and the federal.
Were you ever aware of a time that Mr. Rush put his own money into Ocean Gate Incorporated or Ocean Gate Expedition to fund missions or to keep employees paid?
Yes.
Can you kind of go into that? How many times? When?
How many times? I'm uncertain that there was a few times where Ocean Gate Inc. was going to have difficulty meeting payroll, and he increased his investment by making a deposit, and we were able to meet payroll.
Did Ocean Gate Foundation ever loan Ocean Gate Incorporated or Ocean Gate Expedition's money?
Not to my understanding, no.
Were any Ocean Gate employees ever asked to forego their paycheck or would be willing to get paid later?
Yes.
Can you kind of go into that? How many times and when?
It was one time. I believe it was the beginning of 2023. We were looking to make ends meet, and if we were able to defer our paychecks, there was an offer that Stockton had derived, I believe, with an attorney or whomever, that we could delay our paychecks and be paid a small amount of interest and recapture it at a specific time.
Can you go into why that occurred in 2023 and not the other years?
I believe the finances were just getting very tight at that time.
Did any Ocean Gate employees ever not receive a paycheck?
During this time, I believe it was Stockton and myself that delayed our paychecks.
So you delayed your paychecks just once or multiple times?
Just once.
What was the company policy? And I know you touched on this a little bit, but regarding completing a dive and refunds, did mission specialists have to actually see the Titanic wreck site? And were they given a credit if they didn't see it? Or how did that work?
The specifics, again, were handled by Stockton. So exactly how the refunds worked was a little bit outside of my role and responsibility, and I never saw a refund come through. But they were given a credit. I know that. That would sit and wait for them to come back, return, and join with us to complete an expedition and a successful dive.
And a successful dive would include actually physically seeing the Titanic?
Yes.
Lieutenant Steele, can you please pull up Coast Guard Exhibit 035, which is the Ocean Gate Expedition's waiver and release liability form? I'll give you a second to look it over if you need, but are you familiar with this form?
Yes, I am.
When were mission specialists given this form?
They were given to it when the mission specialist agreement came out to review before they made any type of payment. And then they were given it again aboard ship prior to the dive, usually the evening prior to the dive that they would be on. Or possibly another iteration and things that would happen would, the whole team would meet and this would be presented of people who hadn't seen it. And they were familiarized, and then that would be, you know, 10 to 12 people that would be in the room, and it was presented aboard ship.
You just stated of people who haven't seen it. So is that the first time sometimes they would see it?
Not our mission specialists in that case, as our content experts, possibly any science people who had joined us. And if they were interested and if the opportunity arose for them to join a dive, it was never guaranteed, but this was the waiver that they would also be introduced to.
So this was for other people onboard and the mission specialists?
Yes.
Whose responsibility was it to send this form?
It was generally our Expedition Director. It was sent over in a DocuSign packet to them.
To your knowledge, were mission specialists ever sent these waivers during their flights to the mission or onboard the support vessel? I know you just said that usually it's the second time they've seen that.
Yeah, I don't believe they were ever sent that. But again, I would have no knowledge if somebody was to have emailed it to them while they were on their way.
And do you know, to your knowledge, what would happen if someone refused to sign the waiver? Would they be refunded or given a credit or?
I wouldn't, to my knowledge, I've never seen anybody refuse to sign the waiver that was a mission specialist. And so I wouldn't know, but I would assume they would be getting a credit.
We heard testimony from Miss Willby last week, a former Ocean Gate contractor that stated when she tried to bring up several safety concerns to you regarding Dive 80 on July 16, 2022, the dive, that was the dive where the loud bang was heard. She was told that she was causing trouble and did not have an explorer mindset. Can you explain to us what that means?
I don't believe that either one of those statements is exactly what I had said. Again, that was, my recollection may be wrong. And her concerns in general, she had actually told me she had been very sick for months prior, had joined the ship and hadn't slept in three weeks, came aboard, and all her concerns were listened to and notated, but what she was specifically referencing, I don't have any knowledge of.
Did anyone other than her bring up safety concerns to you on that dive regarding the loud bang?
No, it wasn't my responsibility. And anytime anyone brought up a safety concern, because I would have no working knowledge operationally or engineering, to refer them back to the head of engineering, to the Director of Operations, and to Stockton. And I did ask her if she did have concerns to bring those up to those particular people.
And what was her response?
I don't remember. I'm sorry.
Why was Miss Willby sent home the next day before the end of her contract?
Miss Willby was sent home. I was not there for the experience, but I was asked by Stockton to release her from her contract as she had acted erratically, unprofessionally, and had disturbed our crew during a challenging situation in the communications pit.
Can you kind of go into a little more of that? Is that your own experience or just what Mr. Rush told you?
That is what Mr. Rush told me. Wendy Rush, who was in the comms pit along with others of the Ocean Gate staff and a few mission specialists, that she was acting unprofessionally, crying, yelling, and kind of pushing aside recommendations and asking, people had asked her to stand down, and she did not.
And do you know what she was crying and yelling and disturbing the crew about?
I believe we had lost communications with the sub. It was not at full depth, and we were trying to reestablish that. That does occur and has occurred multiple times on dives, and communications are restored through, working through specific processes and processes, that she was there to be an assistant and stand behind. And I believe, for whatever reason and her expertise, she tried to jump in, and they were working through those challenges on their own, and they were successful in working through those challenges, to my knowledge. Again, I was not up there, but this is what was relayed to me.
How did the number of employees at Ocean Gate change throughout your time there?
When I started, as I had stated previously, I believe there was close to 30 employees. COVID happened, and any kind of operations at seas were then halted, obviously getting into a submersible and onto ships and all of those things. So we had to get rid of many of our operational staff who was there, who were doing small jobs because they wouldn't, you know, boat tending and things of that nature, because they were no longer needed at this time. So company just shrank and tried to keep its feet on its ground during the COVID-19 pandemic.
And how about after the COVID pandemic?
We were still in recovery mode as a country and as businesses, and we would fill in where needed aboard ship with contractors.
You had mentioned that on, I believe it was 2022, your roles started changing a little bit onboard the support vessel, and you were part of the dome closing crew? Is that correct?
Yes.
Opening and closing? Can you kind of go into that a little bit more in detail? What did that look like? What were your roles? What did the crew with you do?
Sure. In the beginning, it was assisting in bringing over air compressor hoses, checking and double-checking our bolts, making certain that they were greased with specific maritime grease, changing them out if they were flawed, and then making certain the people that were opening and closing. The dome had all the equipment they needed, which is ratchet, wrench, those basic things, drills for our all threads. And so first, I was just managing that equipment and efficiently getting to them. Then I began to open and close using the bolts, inspect the O-ring, make certain it was cleaned and in marking order, and help our mission specialists into the submersible and out of the submersible, gathering their safety gear, helmets, and life jackets that that's not necessary inside the sub, and then being there when they came back and reissuing those and their shoes so that they could, again, board the ship safely.
Were there written procedures in place to ensure it was closed correctly?
Yes, there was a checklist.
And what was that checklist a part of? Was it like a part of a manual?
You know, because my operation, I'm certain there was a manual, but my operations just was around that particular checklist, so I'm not certain what bigger piece of information or manual it was part of.
And how did you get trained on your role as the lead dome closing crew?
Again, assisting and many, many a time, because even if we're not making a dive, we are opening and closing. If it's raining, if we're going into maintenance, we need to close it for the evening. And so I was trained under the supervision of our operations people, some of our good contractors who had worked for us, as well as Stockton Rush.
And your training, did that include like a qualification process or was it just like on-the-job training?
It was on-the-job training.
Can you explain to us? You've mentioned a few times about the mission director. Can you explain their roles and responsibility as the mission director?
The mission director aboard ship during these was in charge of overseeing all the working parts and checking in, which each one of the leads, if it was, you know, I was dome opening and closing, is the dome secured? Yes, radiating in. They would also assess and look for strikes and anomalies that were occurring during the dive that may affect the outcome or whether or not, you know, three strikes, and I know that was mentioned earlier, then the dive was canceled. And we had canceled multiple dives because of strikes due to weather and other things going on. And so he would calculate those and then discuss that with the engineering, the operations head, and anybody who was in a lead role. If we had divers out in dinghies, it was checking in with all of those, making certain we were all comfortable in what we were doing and that we had completed things and that it was as successful to us as possible.
So is it fair to say that the mission director was in charge of the entire mission and dive?
It's a shared responsibility just overall, because we each hold our own responsibilities out there to where we are executing, when we are, and how we are doing that. But yes, he was the main coordinator or she, if there would be a female, but no.
So who's the primary person? I know you talked about strikes and anomalies, but who's the primary person that decides if a dive is a go or no go?
It's a collaborative effort between operations, engineering, Stockton and his role, and our mission director.
Lieutenant Steele, can you please pull up Coast Guard Exhibit 027? That's the Health and Safety and Environmental Manual. And go to page 147. And I can read it for, I'll read it for you as well. It states, "The mission director shall be in charge of monitoring, directing, modifying, and potentially canceling a dive operation." So with that said, if the mission director and, say, the pilot onboard had a disagreement over canceling a dive, who has the authority to cancel the dive? The mission director or the pilot?
It would be the mission director.
I'm going to kind of backtrack a little bit to your expedition in 2021. Specifically, want to talk about Dive 65, which was on Mission 3 on July 19, 2021. It was a dive to 3,500 meters. Were you on that mission, correct? You were on all the missions?
Yes.
And if it helps, we can pull up the dive log. I can pull that exhibit up to kind of help refresh your memory. I kind of want to talk about that dive.
That would be great. Please pull that.
Lieutenant Steele, can you please pull up Coast Guard Exhibit 052, which is the Ocean Gate Dive and Maintenance Log?
Commander Emmons, just for the record, can you clarify when you say you were on that mission, if you mean on the expedition or on the actual dive mission?
Yes, I was on the expedition in 2021. I was physically aboard ship during this time.
And you were on this Mission 3, specifically Dive 65 on Mission 3?
I don't recall. I'll read you the documents, but yeah.
Apologies, but again, on the ship, right? I think that's the important.
Correct. As a support.
Miss Bay testified that she was on the vessel for the entirety of the 21. I think the confusion is, we were saying on a dive.
I understand. Correct. That's what I'm asking. Were you present?
And aboard the ship, yes.
Correct. Yes, thank you. So on this dive, they had a drop weight issue on this dive. It was a dive to the Titanic that, if you keep scrolling, it says 3,500 meters, so it didn't quite make it down to their intended destination. From your point of view, on the support vessel, as being part of that mission, can you, do you recall and remember that particular dive? And yellow there, it also, it had a drop weight issue on that mission?
I'm sorry, I don't remember specificities around that particular dive.
One of the crew members and one of the employees of Ocean Gate that was inside the Titan on Dive 65 left that mission early. And it stated as the mission director, as the Director of Administration and Human Resources, do you know why that employee left early?
Do, from my understanding, there was a disagreement in the submersible between Stockton and that employee mentioned, if this is the incident. And again, I'm not certain if this is the time. And this employee decided he wanted to go home and spend time with his family and that he was finished working for us and left when we reached shore.
Did you ever have an exit interview with him before he left the company?
I did not.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions I have.
Thank you. Ms. Bay, I do think you're referring to the incident that we're asking about. Do you remember the nature of the disagreement between Mr. Rush and this mission specialist in the Titan? I'm sorry. Let me correct the record. Do you remember the nature of the disagreement between Mr. Rush and the crew member during that expedition?
I do not. I was probably asleep during this time and taking care of people onboard ship, so the nature was outside of my understanding or, again, viewpoint.
Did you ever participate in any of the submersible expeditions, even the Titan or other dives?
What do you mean by participate?
Were you ever inside the submersible?
Yes.
Which mission did you participate in?
I believe at least once I was in the sub for tests, and so it wasn't a full expedition to the Titanic, but a launch and recovery and systems test. And that happened in 2022.
Was that just a shallow dive to 10 meters?
Yes.
Were there any issues during that test dive?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, I believe they were troubleshooting communication systems, making certain the thrusters worked, any kind of repairs or maintenance, just doing general checks of all systems.
Were you ever part of the communications team during a dive on the bridge?
No.
You had mentioned that you were aware that at times communications were lost with the Titan while it was conducting operations at depth. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Certain times throughout the depth, we did have three ways of communication. My understanding, again, that is from Ocean Gate, and was that shallower, sometimes the communication systems would need to be changed. Obviously, there's difficulty communicating through the water system, and so at times it would go out, and there was a specific amount of time set by the team, the engineering team, communications team, that was allowed to go by before anyone was concerned.
Do you know if there was ever a time where communications were lost that raised a concern ahead of the accident voyage?
Possibly once. It went a little longer than Wendy, who, you know, obviously was involved in communications, was comfortable with. And then it came back online. I don't know if that was three minutes, five minutes. And that's the only time that I know that communications were lost for a significant amount of time.
And this is more of a technical question, so let me know if you don't know this, but do you know when communications were lost at depth? If that included text communications and positional information from the Titan, like the telemetry data that comes?
Again, I would have no knowledge of, I would, I can make an understanding that Wendy was in charge of the text part of this. So that would be the part where she would show concern if she hadn't heard from the pilot. But yeah, that's it.
At this time, I'd like to go to the National Transportation Safety Board for questions. Mr. Muse?
Good morning again, Ms. Bay. Can you tell us a little bit about the planning for the 2019 expedition, which was later canceled? How far along were they in planning for that expedition?
I believe that planning was, majority of it was complete. They had booked hotels, were ready. Again, I came in, end of 2018, beginning of 2019, and most of those things had already been handled. And they were ready to go and excited to go.
What's your understanding of why that expedition was canceled?
I believe it was the ship was pulled. I had come into work. They said the ship had pulled, and they had offered a substitutional ship that was not going to meet our needs. And there was, you know, stress around the office a little bit in regards to that, and people went into conference rooms to call and try to figure out an alternative.
Do you know what ship or company those were?
I do not.
Did they say why they pulled the ship?
I, they, I didn't hear from the ship company itself. I think Stockton had said it had been hired for a job that would bring more revenue to the ship company, and they needed to, the ship company needed to pivot to bring in revenue.
The second ship that they offered, what was the issue with that one?
I have no idea. I wasn't part of those meetings and still very young in my career.
I'd like to follow up on some of Commander Emmons' safety culture questions, and we've already talked about Miss Willby, but my questions are more generic in nature and can apply to either the Everett facility or missions or even in the Bahamas for that matter. Can you describe any formal or even informal means to communicate safety concerns?
I wasn't necessarily a part of anything that happened in the Bahamas, and safety concerns and all of that were collected by our operations director, engineering director, and Stockton and the mission director around that. So the formality of that really wasn't in my purview as far as submersible operations safety.
Do you feel that the staff at Ocean Gate felt comfortable raising safety concerns?
I believe so. I think people were verbal with Stockton, specifically or with each other, when, you know, obviously, they knew we were doing very difficult things with safety concerns. I wasn't witness to those types of meetings, but I was witness to people saying, "Oh, yeah, I talked to Stockton about that today."
Were safety concerns addressed promptly, one way or the other?
I believe, you know, I was mostly exposed to those on expedition, and they were always promptly.
Can you give me an example of one from an expedition, maybe?
Let me think here. In 20, one of the expeditions, there was a fitting issue with our vacuum, and that was brought up. It was immediately taken care of by, you know, finding alternative device to fix that and was looked at. And second, it looked at by our Director of Operations and again, looked at by our engineers and deemed to be okay to continue on with the mission. But that would be one small thing that occurred while I was out.
Did the Horizon Arctic or Polar Prince crew discuss or brief you on their safety management system and how to communicate concerns in their system?
In the Horizon Arctic, they had little pieces of paper that you could turn in to the captain if, for any kind of safety issue that you saw, be it, you know, wet floors, screw misplaced, those types of things. So that, we were briefed on that, everybody was, when we arrived on the ship.
Was Ocean Gate or mission specialists encouraged to use that system?
Yes.
Sometimes, safety policy or procedures, people find ways to work around them to get jobs done. Was there tolerance at all for willful violations of policy or procedure? For example, just skipping a, skipping a line on a checklist would be an example.
No, not whatsoever. The checklists were put in place, and we were meant to follow them, or at least from my purview, that you did everything on that checklist. And if, under, when I was closing the dome, if Stockton noticed that I maybe had missed a second glance at something, he would correct me immediately.
Was there any complacency perhaps as the days got longer or as the expeditions got longer?
Not from my viewpoint. Everybody was very dedicated.
Do you believe the crew, your crew had adequate time to complete their task that they were assigned?
Excuse me, you talking about any particular time period?
I'm not, no. I'm not, no.
More than likely, it wasn't necessarily my crew. So I would expect, yes, they had adequate time and things were taken care of.
Sorry, your colleagues in that, in other words?
Yeah, absolutely. There was no rushing or pushing to complete tasks. They need to be done correctly.
Okay. Thank you for your time today, Ms. Bay.
Ms. Bay, Mr. Fawcett has some questions for you to my left.
Ms. Bay, Keith Fawcett, thanks for being here. So since you were part of the dive support crew on Expedition 2023, do you know if loss of communication would be an anomaly or a strike while the Titan was diving?
I wouldn't be qualified to say.
You were talking about fastening the dome prior to the dive. Do you know what twerking a fastener is, the term?
Yes.
And what is that?
Twerking a fastener is going too far with your ratchet, tightening it into making, we were doing ratchet, two clicks with the wrench. So twerking a fastener is generally if you're twerking something, you're tightening it and over tightening it can be of concern as well.
So this was a standard ratchet wrench and you tighten the fastener to, you audibly heard two clicks, is that correct?
Correct, audibly and felt it, two clicks.
And then you mentioned the term all threads. Could you explain what all threads are?
Certainly, all threads were used to manually open and close the dome. There was one on the side and one below. And all thread is a threaded piece of steel, whatever material that is attached, in our case, to the sub. And you would crank that open and shut together in tandem to close and open the dome.
But it was not used to fasten the dome to?
It was not, no.
So for the Expedition 2023, were the number of the actual Ocean Gate employees and contractors aboard the Polar Prince the same as would have been on the expedition for 2022?
I believe so or very close. There were roles that needed to be filled and we had contractors fill in to the roles. But if they were exact, I am uncertain.
So the evening risk assessment meetings, you generally participated in those on Expedition 2023?
Yeah, I attended them.
And at what time would those have been held approximately?
Generally right after dinner, give or take a half an hour.
So on Expedition 2023 in the evening, where would the Titan and the Lars platform be located in relationship to the Polar Prince?
The majority of the time it was out on the line. We're in its tow configuration behind the Polar Prince. If we were inshore, then it would be pulled up alongside to not cause a hindrance in the port and secure it there.
So immediately prior to the dive, was there another risk assessment meeting held where the risk index was reevaluated?
In, there was the evening where the risk index was shown and that would project weather, any other things. In the morning, again, the Mission Director would go and check in with each individual participating in the dive in any role and ask what are, how we felt, where we were at about the dive in general. So if we were exhausted and worried or if we were confident and competent in our role and what we were doing and ready to go forward, that was part of the risk assessment the morning of. And that risk assessment stayed live all during the preps to the dive and before the dive. So anomalies can be reported then. Any type of difficulty was expected to be reported. And all, any kind of challenging situation. The formal meeting happened and then we went. So maybe 5:00 AM we would all meet and say this, what we came up with last night here, let's go. And then we all started jumping into our roles for the dive.
So was the, the risk index, on the final dive, the risk index was 35. Would that be announced at the evening meeting? Would that number be derived from the results of that meeting?
Yes.
And then how would the condition of the Titan and the Lars submersible, which is well behind the vessel on a tow line, how would that condition of that vessel be assessed to see if any change had happened between the evening meeting and the morning?
Certainly, again, from my understanding and my viewpoint, absolutely our Operations Director, our pilots, they would go and inspect the sub, open it. I would open it up. They would get inside. They would start turning on systems, walking around, checking that everything was in place, that there was nothing of concern. And it was just an ongoing process of obviously being observant and evaluating whether or not the sub was in working order and ready to be dove.
So would you be in radio communication, your team with the support vessel as the dive was getting ready to recommence or start?
I was in radio communication with the Mission Director who was sitting, I believe, next to the captain in the bridge. So I guess the answer would be the captain heard, but I was speaking directly to the Ocean Gate Mission Director.
Did you ever hear the Mission Director announce, like immediately prior to the dive, the final risk assessment number?
I heard that he would talk about additional anomalies if they had been reported and that the, you know, if we have moved from one strike to two strikes, maybe something got delayed and pushing that timeline out is also can contribute to a strike. And he was, we're sitting at two strikes now. Are we ready to commence? Does anybody have any fears? Okay, let's continue to go on. So in a way, absolutely, he would be in communication with any additional things that had happened and occurred that morning.
But just to be clear, you didn't hear a new risk index number conveyed to the team?
Not that I recall.
Have you ever heard a strike identified in the course of a dive?
Yes.
And can you give me an example of one of those?
I believe there was a system, well, actually like during an underwater dive, yes, when communications went out for five minutes. Let's use that as an example or so longer than what we had initially or what people were comfortable with, it would be called. So that would be a three-strike or a strike you need to come up and abort the mission. But there were many strikes that would occur.
So you just said it would be a three-strike?
Yeah, there is three strikes. And then the mission would be completely called. So that could be a switch in crew. That could be a weather issue. That could be whatever type of issue. And there was an amount of anomalies, again, I'm not certain, somewhere between eight and 12, that would be, add up to one strike. So anomaly might be I found a bolt sitting on the floor or the wrenches are not put in the right place and we need to find those. All of those are reported as anomalies.
And then in the course of a dive, have, as a submersible, you know, the Titan, has a third strike occurred where the vessel had to surface as a result of that third strike?
I believe so, but my recollection is a little bit gray in that area. But, you know, dives have been aborted and I would assume that would be because of a third strike.
And then shifting gear a little bit, on the final voyage, there was a 19-year-old Mission Specialist. Is that the youngest individual that's ever dove on the Titan?
I believe so. The year prior, there was a father-son team and I'm uncertain of the son's age.
Did anybody express any misgivings that you were aware of at Ocean Gate for taking people that young, realizing that individual was an adult on those dives?
No, no true misgivings. It was, again, discussed. Stockton had spoke to the family directly on a few occasions and met with them personally. So there was no concerns once they, they had been spoken with and understood everyone was, understood and was ready and excited to dive.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Bay, for the record, during that line of questioning, you talked about some standard procedures at Ocean Gate. But I want to clarify that you were not onboard during the accident voyage. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Ms. Bay, Lieutenant Commander Emin's has some follow-up questions for you.
Ms. Bay, to Mr. Fawcett's questions, in 2023, you stated that contractors were used to fill the spots, the empty spots of the employee spots. We had heard last week from Ms. Rojas that she was a volunteer on that last mission on, and specifically on dive 88. Was this because you didn't have enough employees to fill the spots in 2023?
No, Renata in general has always been a good friend of Ocean Gate, a good friend of the Rush family, enjoyed going on expedition. And if she could make it work with her schedule and we could accommodate her, we would never refuse her presence because she's a bevy of information and just a great person to have onboard.
Did you ever have any other volunteers, specifically in 2023?
Not to my recollection.
And to your knowledge, who took over your job on the missions four through five on the Expedition 2023? The ones you weren't able to attend?
Renata came in as a people person, which is very well suited for, as well as one of our physicians, you know, to take care and keeping of people aboard ship. Checking and making certain the PPE, the gloves are dry, everything is ready. As far as operationally around Titan, I was unaware who would be designated for that role.
And was she trained, did you train her or was she trained in those duties?
I worked alongside her during my training period in 2022. When she was aboard ship, she always was very excited to step up when she could and step back when she didn't feel like she could. And so as far as specific training, I am uncertain what, who trained her. But she had actually been with Ocean Gate longer than I have.
To your knowledge, was there a submersible available for the 2019 expedition?
I'm sorry, can you?
Was there a submersible that was ready, to your knowledge, for the 2019 expedition that was supposed to happen?
Well, the week that the ship pulled, the submersible has seen, had been seen to have a flaw and it was pulled. So that whole week was devastating to all of us and staff. So there, at that point, to make it to that depths, we have two other submersibles, but they are not at all tested or rated to go as deep to the Titanic, so.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to go to Ocean Gate Council for any questions.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Bay, you mentioned that in 2021, a crew member left the expedition after dive 65. Did that individual return to Ocean Gate's 2022 expedition?
I, I don't recall. I don't believe so. This particular person had been employed by Ocean Gate a few different times.
And you also described the process for the three strikes. Were there ever any issues that would go straight to the dive being aborted? Weather related or anything else that would not be a strike but go straight to canceling a dive?
Oh, definitely weather related. If we saw that, it was just going to be impossible. And that could be at that time or the projected forecast. So it may seem nice in the morning, but we knew in the afternoon we were going to recover the sub, that it would be very, very challenging. That could immediately cancel a dive, not having available people due to illness or anything else that was happening off wouldn't immediately cancel a dive as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Bay, did you ever receive or overhear a complaint or concern voiced by a Mission Specialist over late delivery of their liability release?
Late delivery of their liability release? I'm sorry, would you restate the question?
Did you ever hear a Mission Specialist voice any concerns or complaints about the timing of the delivery of their liability waiver release?
I did not.
Ms. Bay, is there anything that we haven't asked you that you think would be valuable for this investigation?
No, not at this time.
It's my understanding that you would like to make a statement before we close your testimony?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Please proceed.
I had the privilege of knowing the explorers whose lives were lost. Stockton, PH, Cesada, Swobin, and Hanish. And there's not a day that passes that I don't think of them, their families and lives. It's been a difficult year for them and for all of us. I would also like to thank the board for the work they've done and continue to do in this investigation. And I hope my testimony has been of some help to you.
Thank you, Ms. Bay.
So that concludes the testimony of Amber Bay. And I'm glad it followed that of Phil Brooks, who spoke a little about Ocean Gate's financial difficulties and brought up the company asking their employees to delay being paid. This testimony added to that and we are left with a much clearer picture as to how bad things really were. Going into the 2023 missions, we hear how strained things were and how the company was struggling to fulfill its payroll with both Stockton Rush and Ms. Bay both delaying their own payments so that payroll could be met. We also heard about Stockton Rush increasing his own investment in the company to keep things going. And so knowing this, it is quite easy to believe the urgency and rush that they had to get Titan diving and to start generating revenue. This, of course, comes with a downside, that being a lack of safety and going through all of the necessary steps to ensure it. So then we heard about the interaction Ms. Bay had with Antonella Willby. When asked about it, Ms. Bay states that she had no knowledge of the specifics of what Ms. Willby said regarding dive 80. And sorry, but personally, I do find that a little hard to believe as it wasn't exactly just a normal, random conversation as we have previously heard. Still, Ms. Bay says she deferred Ms. Willby to somebody higher up. And we know from her own testimony that Ms. Willby also spoke with Phil Brooks, who also basically ignored her concerns. As I said earlier, I was glad that this topic was brought up. Though, other than Ms. Willby being described as ill, emotional and disruptive, the latter being why Stockton Rush then ordered for her to be sent home, the questioning stopped there. Personally, I just found this section a little frustrating and saw it as an opportunity to delve more into the culture of the company. But still, there we go. Going back to the company's finances, we learned that the workforce shrank due to the pandemic and afterwards, any holes were plugged with contractors. Ms. Bay speaks about the roles that she personally undertook, which included being hands-on and helping with the dome opening and closing crew. This was done via on-the-job training with no actual recognized certified training in place. And I don't think that this comes across as very safe at all or looks overly professional that the head of administration is performing such a task. I remember the company being described as the Wild West and it certainly does feel that way. Ms. Bay even being in the position to perform that role makes me wonder greatly if it was actually due to the staff shortages. And then also, Ms. Bay perhaps being a yes person, which is something, as we have learned in the past, that seemed to be a crucial thing to keep in your job. Then, later in the video, the questions began to grow a bit firmer and more direct, especially when the representative of the NTSB got involved. And it was nice to hear questions that probed the safety culture of the company and if, for example, steps were skipped or if people had enough time to perform their duties properly. As I expected though, and despite what we have heard from several speakers so far, according to Ms. Bay, there was no rush and every step that was required was followed. This isn't true, of course. I mean, we only have to go back to the previous testimony on this channel with Phil Brooks, who spoke about the broken sensors on the hull and the wish for testing of the hull itself, both of which were denied because of time and money constraints, despite their critical importance. So it can be frustrating with these testimonies sometimes, not knowing the whole truth. I mean, it is true that Ms. Bay simply may not know some things, given her role in the company. but I also do feel like there was some deflection at certain points and a lot of I-don't-knows and some answers sounding a little Guillermo Sonline-ish, a little corporate, like, I don't know and I was very young in my career, which in a way, sounds like it can seek to lessen responsibility. But again, these testimonies are not black and white and can leave different people with different conclusions. I also understand, especially at the end, that this was very emotional for Ms. Bay, but I am still glad that Suleman Darwood was mentioned. As with all of the information and accusations flying around since the tragedy happened, it can sometimes overshadow those who unfortunately lost their lives. I also just wanted to touch briefly on safety once more and the treatment of Titan itself and how it was just left out on a tow line overnight before a dive, or left in a parking lot in Canada, or was dropped on its platform on the support ship when the front dome fell off and then was operated again straight afterwards with a mission specialist aboard, no less. It's no wonder that people raised safety concerns. And to me, Ocean Gate's methods reeked of cost-cutting, which in itself is not something alien to companies, especially when one is struggling financially. But still, it should not be at the price of safety. But anyway, that concludes the testimony given by Amber Bay and I hope that you found it insightful, too. I will be back again soon with a brand-new video. But for now, I thank you all very much for clicking on this one. So until next time, bye for now.